All right, let's bring the Dune City Wednesday, December 15th, 2021 meeting order. May we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Forsyth.
Here.
Council President Sheldon Meyer.
Present.
Councillor Tom Mellon.
Here.
Councillor Robert Orr.
Here.
Councillor Roy, sorry, Roy forgot who you were.
That's okay. Here.
And Councillor Susan Snow and Councillor Duke Wells are absent in this case.
To join me in a pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda. So move. Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, approved. Yes.
Before you get to the consent agenda, I'm going to ask you all to add one more bill. One of the bills of the session came in today for $435 to Brent Chips. He's the guy that does our maintenance run.
Okay.
He's working on the storage shift.
What is this?
That one.
Ah, cool.
$435.
Excellent. All right, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with singular change. So move. Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any vote? Hearing none, such agenda is approved. Announcements, Jamie?
Spectrum from Pacific West LLC has announced the following programming updates. On or around December 31st, 2021, the Victory Channel on Channel 172 will be remanded from Victory Channel to Bulldog Shopping Network. On or around January 1st, 2022, Spectrum will discontinue carrying the NBC Sports Network on Channels 89, 422 SD, and 812 HD. I know, I was surprised by that, too. My husband says it's just fine with him. On or around January 5th, 2022, the DIY Network on Channels 81 SD and 854 HD will rebrand from DIY Network to Magnolia. On the agenda, I have announced that it was due to a lack of a quorum pursuant to Dune City code, the Planning Commission consideration and decision regarding ordinance number 259 is declared invalid, and all new public hearings will be set and all notice requirements met prior to the new hearing date. Actually, further examination shows that that provision of code was changed a few years later, and so it did not exist. It's now still a quorum, and a quorum includes... But there were issues with it. The... When the Vice Chairman was serving as Chairman, when he's serving that position, he's not supposed to vote, in this case, he did, and he shouldn't have, and that would mean only two people voted for that to refer it to the City Council, and I feel that it needs to go back and have a little more consideration. Besides, staff has found some more issues that need to be corrected. So if you would please today, I don't have it specifically on the agenda, but if you would confirm that that would... That you would send it back to them for further consideration, I would appreciate it.
Okay.
And make it all cleaner.
Should we do that now? Are we going to make a motion now?
Yeah.
Yeah, might as well do it, John.
I'd like to be sent back to reconsideration. All second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, goes back to the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
So is item C, it looks like there's a date problem.
Yes. What I had was a typo problem, yeah. Item C is supposed to read, "The Dune City offices will close at 4:00 PM Thursday, December 23rd, and will remain closed until Monday, January 3rd, 2022. However, if there is an emergency, you can call City Hall. My number, my home number is on the message machine, and you can call me at home anytime. I'm not going anywhere."
Excellent.
Even after the phone rings?
Huh?
Even after the phone rings?
Well, that doesn't mean I can hear the phone if I'm in here.
Citizen input.
Thank you for sending 259 back to the Planning Commission.
Old business. Damn operation.
You skipped Citizen input, did you?
No, she...
I just said thank you for sending it back to the Planning Commission.
I hope she asked him.
My name is...
I know who she is.
My name is Melissa Benson. I'm a resident here in Dune City on Lake Drake.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
So whose damn operations?
Okay, and as you will recall at the last meeting, I was directed to contact our water attorney to ask her about the certificate number 79195, which is the certificate that was previously owned by International Paper and now owned by Mr. Hyde Gurkin, and find out if we... There was a way to cancel that permit or somehow...
If it was still valid?
Yeah, if it was still valid. And in their packet, you will see, now I tried to highlight it and then forgot to copy it in color, so in the gray area is our attorney's answer to that. Do you want me to?
That's a gray area.
That's a gray area. Do you want me to read it?
Not necessarily. I mean, oh, I guess you should for the audience, I'm sorry.
Okay. OWRD certificate 79195 was canceled, and a remaining right issued under OWRD certificate 80656. OWRD certificate 80656 has repeatedly been leased in-stream, which counts for use under the forfeiture cancellation law. The latest lease was for five years to terminate on December 31st, 2025. However, on June 25th, 2021, our attorney, Schroeder Law Offices, filed a request to terminate the in-stream lease that will accordingly be terminated on December 31st, 2021. This information is available via OWRD's online portal. If after considering these publicly available facts, Dune City would like to further investigate obtaining this water right, Schroeder Law will have to refer you to another attorney. And I included also in your packet the order terminating the in-stream lease that they did have, which to me begs the question, why don't we get an in-stream lease?
So if we get the water right lease, does that mean that we can use water rights for silicates also, not just for the lake?
The water rights under these certificates are for...
Both lakes.
Both lakes.
Both lakes.
But the ones we have are just water right.
The ones we have, yes, but we're talking about silicates.
So this is a... This would be given up, obtaining water rights for silicates?
Yeah. The water right for silicates under what used to be permit 79195 and is now 80656 is able to be used for recreational and fish purposes. That is a use that was built into it. So I don't know what this lease was for and who it was to or for or anything about that, but it... I see no reason why the city... Because we can't actually afford to buy the rights from him, couldn't approach him about a lease.
Well...
Because it keeps it good?
But the... It's terminated on the 31st of December.
The lease, yeah.
The water right lease.
Yeah, the temporary... The lease is... Using the water is what keeps it active, and if it's leased, it's keeping it active.
Right. Now, the thing, the problem I have with it is it's not so much about the water, to me, it's the operation of the dam.
Right.
So the water issue we have is the rise and fall of the water, how high to keep it full of blood. And even if they gave up that water right for usage, the dam operation is still an issue.
If they gave up that water right, they would have to take the dam out, and that doesn't help us any. So the idea is to do something that keeps the dam in place, keeps the dam operational, just changes the operations.
Of it, right.
And there is a way, I mean, there's no reason why you can't go in and amend it.
Right, and there's...
Or ask for a change.
My point being is we keep talking about water right, but we have not ever brought up the dam issue, operation of it. It's not in our county. It's in Douglas County.
Yeah, but we were parties to the initial action. The city was a party to the initial action, and that's why the schedule was scheduled the way it was, based on the city's participation, but the city has grown, the uses have changed, the lake has changed, the weather has changed.
Nobody's manufacturing down there.
Right, and they're not using it, so why not ask for an amendment or...
Right, exactly.
In the way that it's used, or change in the way that it's used.
Yeah, because the operation of the dam and the water rights for recreation are so much more attuned to us than it is the lack of anybody using it to cut the process.
Correct, exactly. No, it's just a thought.
So we didn't even have the correct certificate?
No. It's been amended, and I didn't know that it had been amended. I just had my files, so I never went back in and checked it, so apparently it's been in play for a long time.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, it's not weird, it's paperwork that doesn't happen. Well, and I think, too, being outside of the city limits and outside of the county, it can be difficult to remember who's supposed to be contacted about work.
Well, that's true, in this way, I mean, because we are a party, and yes, we want notified.
So what's our next ideas group on where we head?
Well, I would certainly like to pursue what we need to pursue to make sure that we continue to have the dam, which gives us the lake and the water that's in the lake. And if our law firm doesn't want to deal with us anymore...
No, it's just she's... Would be... There'd be a conflict for her if she represents other parties.
Oh, okay.
Can we find another firm?
That's what she's recommending, isn't it? She would give us some names, you know?
Maybe one, two firms.
Yeah. Let's... We need to, I think we need to move forward with it. The land is up for sale. I think this is the time to do it.
Okay, I will contact Laura, and I will ask our own legal counsel, too.
So Jamie, are we looking at the potential for a substantial amount of cost to Dune City to, if we're going to go out and get another law firm involved?
Possibly.
Possibly. Okay, I mean, I'm all for pursuing it, looking into it. I just wondered, at this point, we have no way of really knowing how far ahead of this or how many hours of attorney time or anything like that.
Now, we would ask whatever attorney it was, after we had a conference with him in executive session, we would ask them to prepare us a scope of work and give us an idea at that point.
Okay.
Shouldn't we like to kind of cut in yourself?
Oh, thank goodness. Thanks for clearing that up, Jamie. All right, thank you.
And for the record, the next item is actually a letter to BCD. My daughter just likes to see a kid, Dan. Building Codes Division, not DCV. BCD.
All right, and that's the inspector. Is she with the secretary?
Several years.
Several years, yeah. And you wrote the letter already, right?
I wrote the letter already. It is ready to go out because we have a January 1st deadline.
Yeah, okay.
And the letter is in your packet, I just want you to bless it, unless you see a title that needs to be fixed, because I do that a lot.
More years than once. They have considerable experience with the city, and I think they've done a great job, so I'm totally behind continuing in what we're doing to West Coast professionals.
And we have a whole stack of stuff that has entered by January 22nd, but look at those.
All right. Any discussion on this?
No, I agree with you. You're with the blessing, send it out.
Send it out. Second? Inspector, all right. Any discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? You can send it out. Ordinance 260, amending chapter 91, where certain outdoor lighting to be nuisance, first and second reading. This came off the last meeting and then was kind of kicked down the road. Do you prefer the discussion that we're doing now?
It came up in a proposed lighting ordinance, specifically a lighting ordinance. The discussion at the last meeting was, I don't know that any decision was made, but there was a recommendation that it all be moved into a nuisance, into the nuisance clause, rather than a specific code only as to lighting that would affect building codes.
So that if there is a problem, we could deal with it, but if there isn't, why have a...
Why have a massive code to describe the lights and what you can have and what you can't have?
I wish Commissioner Wells was here to comment, because she had, he's the one who had the greatest...
Well, here's my thing with it, and I agreed with Mr. Wells. In the nuisance section and under nuisance code almost everywhere, the... And property code is a statement that says that is the owner of the property has peaceful enjoyment, has the right of peaceful enjoyment of their property. Anything that interferes with that peaceful enjoyment, meaning lighting, noise, anything else, can be complained about, and then the City Council needs to take action and find a way to keep that landlord having peaceful enjoyment. And it's to my concern is to sit down and describe each light that you can and cannot have is...
It's like a... It's like asking how long is a piece of string? It's going to be different in every case.
And how it's used and where it's used. Is a word used on a hill, is it used on a blast?
Over a tree? Over-correctifying the situation.
I think so, too. I just think it's a major overreach when we don't have to, when we can take it, when we can take it.
We have a procedure.
Yeah, we have a procedure already.
I'd say leave it at that.
Well, that's why I developed an ordinance that adds the provisions to the nuisance I had to add some more definitions into the nuisance code, but that wasn't too bad.
Yeah. I think that's the way to approach it. That looked good, Jamie. Do you need a motion to approve this, or...
Well, right now, you would have to go through the whole process for an ordinance, which is first reading, you determine, make a determin... And I'm sorry, I didn't give you a script. You need to make a determination whether you want to have it read by title only or in full. The vote about whether to read it by title only has to be unanimous. If it's not, the whole thing has to be read into the record. And then you go through the process of considering and adopting, and if you would rather wait until the next meeting so that Councillor Wells can be here, that's fine, too.
I think that would be wise, plus we have to post it, and we have notified the rest of Dune City that we're...
Not on this, because this is nuisance, it's not in the building code.
Exactly, wasn't the other one?
Okay.
So it has been posted as far as it is.
I would like to hear Duke's comments on records of it. If, nope, I mean, if most minds...
I'll approve that, too.
But I like, I think this works very well.
Okay, so we're gonna, you're gonna have to have a motion to table it until...
Yeah.
I'm moving to table it, too. Councillor Wells is present.
Anybody second?
All second.
All right.
That way, there just won't be us looking bad.
It's right. Make him have the scapegoat. Any other, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll move that, get Duke's input. Thank you. Jamie, your thing that you compared there that would be written into the nuisance code, I don't have a copy, but I'd like to get one before, sometime before we meet.
This one?
I think so.
It should be in your packet.
It took me a while to find it, too.
It's under...
It's right after the...
It's under old business.
Old business.
No, it's under new business, sorry. It's the new business, pardon.
Oh, there we are, three pages. Okay, got it, thank you.
You're welcome.
She moves pretty fast.
All right, Resolution Series 2021 Number 4, rescheduling the regular session of Dune City Council to the third Wednesday we have every month at 6:00, starting in January. I think we kind of all agree that it was no big deal. Let me look at my calendar now that I'm back into wrestling.
I would like to make the request that we consider moving that to 5:00 PM instead of 6:00. Just because of the time of year, we would have more daylight hours, driving back and forth as we're all getting older. And lastly, I wouldn't have to listen to the wife saying, "I don't want to be eating dinner at 10:00," you know?
So what time did you ask for?
5:00.
I wouldn't be able to do that. I can't make 5:00.
You don't even get off at work till...
Till 6:00 usually, or 6:30. Yeah, this is a stretch.
So if we have attendance, I would think that people would be able to make it at 6:00, maybe not at 5:00, less likely, because... At 5:00, people typically get off work, and there are some people, I think, that live in Dune City that actually do work.
Really?
Which is actually a problem for them, because they have to stay...
Right, right, but, you know, I think 5:00 would be nice, but I think 6:00 is the logical You could bring a sandwich.
Oh, you could start without us.
You'd be done before we get here.
Right here, you just let us know how it went?
We'll have the beans catered.
No, we'll just send a sandwich to his wife's house.
Send it, all right, or send a dinner to her house.
That's right.
So you are aware that she lives in a second house, and I stay in one. I just said that because I've never met her. Well, that's why I've been married for 47 years. What do you think of the other buildings?
I just kind of wondered if she was real or not.
Well, I hope that we approve the resolution to change our regular meeting to the third Wednesday and beginning of January, and again convening at 6:00 PM.
I second. Any discussion? Any further discussion?
Although this should have been you moving this, if you wanted to, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, pass. Thank you. Notes of this session. Reports. Mayor, nothing specifically at all. Barely got back into town after running around. Cookies are great. Thank you very much. Not hard.
Thank you, brother.
I won't be making wrestling weight out of that money next week. Community center, Mr. Wells is not here. Water for Snow is not here. Road reports.
Has anybody got their road reports?
Actually, do a road report?
I've driven around, I don't have anything written up, but the only thing that are roads are my section are the roads or limbs that are hanging over, but other than that, the pavement's good. I missed about 10%, so I've been through most of them. I was trying to walk them, but since I was gone for three weeks, I was...
It's been raining ever since. We did the... Will Dawson from Civil West Engineering and I wrote all the roads the other day, and he took notes of all the things, the problems that were needed, and he's going to write up... Well, he asked me to go through the records and figure out when was the last time work was done on each of the roads and send that to him, because he's doing a computer program to write up our regular road rotation schedule.
Oh, that's fantastic.
Oh, good.
Thank you.
Also, we had one here at City Hall when we had an engineer who was actually hired and working in the building, and then he also made notes of some of the big projects, like Ocean Boulevard, and of course, our continuing efforts at Parkway, and widening of the roads in general, because it would be nice if we could get some of the roads, like Cloud Nine, right there where you just sold the property.
I was going to say, don't care anymore.
I know you don't care anymore.
I don't have to drive down it anymore.
But there's an issue there.
Huge issue, I mean, that's not even, I don't think that's even...
12 feet.
12 feet for a single lane kind of thing, yeah.
And forget that the bushes grow.
Yeah, crazy. We did get a new sign on Cloud Nine, which is great.
Right, that, by the way, those signs are being replaced by Lane County for us.
Oh, sweet.
And so, you know, I told him on this one, I hope that he digs a big hole, puts a 12-bolt battery in there, runs along, so that whoever touches it remembers that they touched it. This is the sixth one in three years.
So are we taking bets on how long this one lasts?
No, I think that's going to be longer than Shady Lane, that's...
Yeah.
Yeah, that's another one that disappears regularly.
Oh, no!
What's that?
Just grind the mounting bolts round.
Yeah.
Or do it. And Niferber put up those orange cones on either side of the street at Clitter Lake and Cloud Nine, and they're really crummy-looking cones, so I suspect they'll probably stay there, but it was for their dump trucks to get in and out and out. Niferber left, but the cones are there, so...
No, Niferber's over here now. I'm sure they'll go get them.
Emergency services, Jamie?
I don't have an emergency services report for this month. I don't know why. I'm pretty sure I attended a meeting. I can tell you, we have been working on the emergency storage building.
I saw it out there the other day.
The first thing we have to do is get power over there so that we can get a heater or a dehumidifier inside, because it's raining inside.
Oh, sure, yeah.
And so we can't do anything in there, can't get any of the work done in there until we dry it out, so I'm working on that. We also have made application... No, I got to do an ordinance. You guys have to consider an ordinance. You have the ability as a City Council that when we make a change, that will be a comprehensive plan change and a land use change, to change it over to commercial property so that we can do the things that we're doing, so that'll be in the future.
All right.
We issued a whole bunch of permits last month, and two public works comments.
We issued a whole bunch of permits last month, and two public works comments, the word about erosion control is getting out, so people are more cooperative and doing what they need to do to make sure that we have the erosion control, we need to help with water quality. The fish screen data, this whole project is going to be a nightmare, and I don't know how we're gonna get it done. It is like pulling eye teeth, but as you see in, with regard to our water measurement, I asked Tracy Fox, who was the one who was in charge of, that's who I send them to every, at the state, and she said, well, I asked her if I should be reporting all these points of diversion that are being used but aren't being reported, because they're not on the plan, on the full permit, should I just chunk them under the two, because we have two that cover everything? And she said, yeah, that'd be a great idea, I asked Susan, I talked to Susan, she goes, well, I've been wondering why you guys haven't filed an amendment? And I said, well, we were told we couldn't, you know, I remember that. And she said, oh, well, yes, you can, because you guys are a different animal, which I knew we were. She said, have your attorney talk to the transfer division, so I contacted Laura, and she will have one of the girls, Nikki, talk to the transfer department and make sure that's okay, and if that's okay, I've already downloaded the form and started working on it, so maybe we can at least get that much done. I have no control over the neighbor who stole the other neighbor's cat, there's nothing I can do about that, I recommend I contact the sheriff's office, but they're not having luck there.
You do a good taxidermist.
That's a big help.
Not a pet problem, a bit from Kansas.
Of course, it might have been a D-five cat.
We have a piece of property, we have some owners of a piece of property in the Manzanita area, and I would ask you all to go drive by there so that you see what it looks like. It's on the corner of Berry and Manzanita, and...
What?
Huh?
What corner?
Berry and Manzanita, Berry, Berry comes out to Clear Lake Road, direct, almost directly across from Woodland Lane, somewhere you would turn left on Woodland, you'd just go right down Berry, and you get down to where it ends and turns the corner, that's the corner of Berry and Manzanita, and look to your left. You can't miss it, and it is worse now than it was when I had them served with a demand letter to clean it up, so I think we're gonna have an issue there that we have to dig in.
What is it, just a lot of debris, or what?
Jump cars, garbage, they're parking on the septic, they're parked in the yard, they're tearing everything up, it's just a disaster area. Okay, I attended a training class on the basis, basics of operating a drinking water system, and Claire continues her classes on becoming an official permit tech, and ultimately she will be the person, the designated person with regard to the building codes division of requirements.
Per name from the application.
I'm sorry?
You put a name of the application or the removal that we just approved?
Okay, and then we, the discussion about ordinance 259, and at the time that I talked to the attorney, I honestly believe in a quorum existed, because the old code read, a quorum of the planning commission is four people, and there were only three here, but then in two thousand and, what year was that, fifteen, it was changed to where it said a quorum is a majority of the members of the committee, and so they did have that, and so legitimately, they did pass it the way they should, I just would, really something as big as this, I would prefer that we have more than two people voting on it. And happy Hanukkah and Merry Christmas, from your fellow servants at Dune City.
Okay. Anything for good of the order? Well, have we addressed this letter that we received, which was put out in front of us from the mailers?
No, I haven't addressed that. I have to address it first.
Oh, you do?
I will have to take action as code enforcement officer.
Okay, all right, so this is not yet a councilation?
Information, information, I believe, so far.
Okay, and was there anything that we needed to do with the note here from the Cyusla news? No. Just information. Yep, just information, and you're saying that they're watching our news and... Yeah. Blah, 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 but I think the point I had was that when we had a reporter, we had Jared or some other people earlier, if he had clarification, he could, he was able to come and talk to us. Yeah. What were you thinking, blah, 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 what was your, why was this in it? Whereas, we don't have that here, so the in-depth part of it is lacking, or can be lacking sometimes, you know, it's fairly easy to be, it's a good deal, but the times that there is things that need to be clarified, they don't have somebody here, and, you know, that's up to them. Okay, fair enough. Okay, then I didn't have anything more.
There's me that shows some degree of non-interest, some degree.
Yeah. Anything for the good of the order, sir?
Yeah, just real quick, the looking at the January calendar, we have Dune City Council regular session on January twelfth, that appears to be the second Wednesday.
Oh, did I mess up?
Yeah, nineteen, this is the third Wednesday.
Oh, hell, we got it.
Close to nineteen, right?
Yeah.
Now, the second, oh, yeah, you're right, it is the second, so it would be the nineteenth.
Sheldon?
Well, I've already confessed all the stupid things that my family's done, but I wish you all a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. End one more year thanking each of you for your time and efforts to maintain Dune City as its gem-like quality. Thank you.
Great, this is a time for coal.
Yes.
I have a couple things, well, I forgot one thing already, so I'll bring it up, oh, the Cyusla news, I know that they watch it, but I think they don't see the body language of things that I do. I have, I continually have issues with Zoom meetings and things, which will dovetail a lot of, talk about now, because we had a quote, we spent twenty-five hundred dollars for somebody to make, was it twenty-five hundred dollars that report was, for assessing our network capabilities and our computers? And my background is, I was operations in technical support, so I managed computer belt desks, I've managed Windows administrators, I've managed DBAs and things like that, I've actually installed whole computer systems in warehouses, probably twenty to twenty-five warehouses throughout the United States, so I have lots of experience with this, and when I first came, I tried to be quiet and dumb, and one of the first things I did was I actually did a land scan of this building, and I noticed that we did have people using our network, which we do, we have a guest network, and I noticed that I could see Fred's PC, which is a name for a computer that we have, we have four computers, and I, it doesn't take any time to know that we had four computers on the system, doesn't take any time to know that, I actually asked you a few times how many PCs we had, and the report showed four, it didn't show, it didn't show a laptop or anything like that, which you said we did have in the report. One of the things that was missing in the report that I saw, one of the things that was missing on our computers in the report, was we didn't have, or we don't have, network security software, you know, PC, Norton Security or anything, and I also took exception when we talked about consumer-grade electronics and things of that sort. Couple things that came to mind is when I, I've seen those, and I mentioned this to staff about the network need to be fixed or something to do that, and I was quiet about several weeks, and we got a PC tech, I thought we had from lane council governments or something like that. I would assume that they would have came and leased upgrade and put antivirus software on our computers, not done, so we don't have a tech, technical support and things, and being, giving, paying twenty-six hundred dollars to tell us something that you could tell in ten or fifteen minutes what we have or didn't have was kind of insulting to me. We have Pacific Automation, which also provides computer services and network services that we should probably talk about to do. One of the things that they, one of the recommendations was to put a server on.
Right.
Web server, and a server requires an administrator, it requires a technician, even a regular PC guy would have put antivirus software on it, and if we're not gonna pay for or support our computer systems with a technician, putting another server that requires cloud software seems, it seems ridiculous. I mean, we should, we should have a better quote, we should, we should at least require somebody to put antivirus software on our computers. I can see, I went and saw the computer types, and I went and see how many CPUs or how many, how much MIPS they have, that we have, and I still think we should have a schedule of changing the PC out every year or every, once every two years, instead of throwing the whole dishpan out and putting it back in, because it, we need to level out our costs, and we need to manage it a lot better. And the network, we, well, we'll talk about Zoom, now this is the words I talk about, our speed, network speed is we have a hundred megabits down, and I think it's five or ten megabits upload, and usually Zoom things take three or four megabits, so what means to me, if we're gonna have interactive Zoom meetings with what we have, is that's three people, four people, I'm surprised it works so well. If we're anything, we're gonna need to upgrade our upload speeds or our download speeds with that, and it's obvious to me, and I would think that any tech that you would have had here would have offered those or done those suggestions, and fixing the network and doing passwords, it's just basic stuff that a tech should do, that we should have, and if we're not paying for it, and I just can't imagine paying twenty-five hundred dollars to be told what we knew before we started. It's great, just really frustrated about it.
Lori, I would like to ask you about, you mentioned that the assessment suggested a server.
A server, right.
Which requires a network administrator, but that may have come from some of staff requests that we be networked, because everything's separate, you know, my files aren't on hers, et cetera, and we got thumb drives going on.
Well, their network, see, a network server is one thing, shared gas, network access is a different thing, and some mid-sized routers and gas does that, it's not necessarily a Windows server, you know, there's all kinds, you can share, have shared files and do that, and that's not necessarily, we could do that, but I think it's overkill, but I think you could have shared files and put it, and hook it up to your router to do that, that's what I do at home. I have a ten megabit NAS that everybody in my, in my house can get to the pictures and things, my TV goes on, it's not rocket science, but it does take a well-disciplined tech, so...
Would that be to, to set it up, of course, but would they also have to manage it anymore?
No.
There isn't any managing that, once it's set up, right?
All right, well, there's always, the problem with, with whatever you do, there's always gonna be management, you're gonna have to, you're still gonna have to update your antivirus, you're still gonna have your patches for your computer, much of that is a lot of magic nowadays, but somebody needs to look at that occasionally, but I don't think, I don't think, I don't think we need to have a full-time person to do that, because you have four computers, you have five computers maybe at the most. I'm concerned about the network, you can do these guest networks, and many of the, even the consumer-grade routers have parental controls that you can manage your guest network, like my guests can't get into my network, and I can have timely, it's on and all kinds of things, it just takes somebody to know to do that. The transportation, the bus company at Columbia County, I've gone and installed their computer systems, there's six of them, and I did their net guest work and do all that stuff, and it's not hard, but you need to do it, you need to spend money, but I, what they, I, when I did my consulting, that was free, what they gave, what I gave them, what you got was free, and we paid twenty-six hundred dollars, which was just, it disappoints me immensely.
Well, I would much rather work with you than them.
Well, I could, I could have do that, I could have done that, I mean, for, for some of the upgrades, I could talk about the routers, I can talk about the network speeds and what you can do about that, without any fees, you might have to pay for, for equipment, but that's, I'd be more than happy to do that, that was, I made my living that way.
Yes, I would much prefer to do it, though. That would be great, because I know, I know nothing, I know, I know how to buy stuff.
So, in Pacific Automation, they do computer services, you know, since we already have a contract, it might not be much more to do that, and I noticed that we have, we do printer stuff on the desk, and my, is, many of these things could be dual-sided, that's a sheet of paper.
Yeah, I just don't like to do it double-sided.
Well, on my computer, and I have it, unless it's set, you never have to worry about it again. Thank you. Merry Christmas. Hey, anybody else?
I just want to double-check with Sheldon, you said that you had told us about all the family issues, I just want to make sure you really did cover them all, because that's not too many, really.
Well, not compared to my family. That wasn't the whole...
Oh, okay, well, next time, maybe we'll get some more?
Maybe some more.
All right, all right, well, Merry Christmas to all of you, and what other happy holidays there is, and we'll see you next year. We'll adjourn at, what the hell? Oh.
Quarter to seven?
Yes. At quarter to three.
Whatever time it is.
What's wrong, that one was wrong last time.